Hello and welcome to the June 28 Issaquah City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda tonight, well, we have three items on the agenda. First is for information, it's a Well Four update. The second is a presentation regarding park impact fees. And the third is a presentation and discussion regarding Central Issaquah Implementation, Mixed Use Development. First on the agenda is the Well Four update and we have Sheldon Lin, Public Works Engineering Director here. Start us off.
Thank you. My name is Sheldon Lin, Director of Public Works Engineering. And I'm here to give the council an update on the hydrogeologic and PFC plume investigation associated with the PFCs that were found in Well Four. Just a quick background on it, back in April, first part of April, the council authorized the treatment for Well Four with activated carbon. That treatment is in place and the well is treated and is functioning well. And there's no detection of PFCs in the water of Well Four after treatment. Since that time, the council had also authorized at that time a study for this hydrogeologic To date, the investigation has drilled five wells between 80 and 100 feet deep located at the locations shown on this map. There's well number one, well number two, three, four, and five. Well number four, the production well, is located right across Issaquah Creek from monitoring well number three. This update is a preliminary update to the council to give you progress of what has occurred and some test results. A more thorough presentation will occur at the council's workshop on July 11. The PFC sampling, the water sampling and testing that has been done, we've only had one round of tests in these wells since they were just recently completed. And we've got the results back. And the lab results for these wells show that down here, monitoring wells 1 through 5, we had lab results in monitoring well number one of .0068, monitoring well number 3 of 0.46, and monitoring well number 5, 0.39. As a perspective here, the raw water in Well Four was right around .4 to .6. So I'm just going to go back to the graphics so you can get a geographic reference on those wells because well 3 and 5 are considered the ones that have the higher concentrations and are of importance. Whoops, sorry. Let's go back. So well number 3 was right across Issaquah Creek from Well Four, the production well. So that makes complete sense. Well number 5 was down at the intersection of 5th and Juniper Street. So just geographically, one thing to note, monitoring well number 1 over here is located where the tanker fire occurred back in 2002. The results there were non-detect. So that is my presentation. It's a progress report, a more in-depth presentation as the consultant is still continuing their analysis will occur on July 11 at the council workshop.
I guess I can call him myself.
Yes, you can.
For Sheldon to call me. Sheldon, I only had one question right now. And you said you mentioned the physical relationship between Well Four and Well Three and something about making sense because of the locations of those.
It's just because they're in close proximity to one another. The raw water in Well Four is roughly .4 to .6 per billion and in Well Three it was at .49, I believe. So correlation-wise, you would expect to have a high result in the monitoring well given its proximity to Well Four. That's what I mean by making sense.
Mary Lou? So, non-detects, were they non-detects completely or were they just below, may have been below method detection limit?
The...
Okay.
The well 2, well 4 here, these are monitoring wells, not production wells, nothing.
So we don't know that, we know that it's not present above .0025. It doesn't mean it's absolutely nothing, it just, it's not seen.
Well, in this case, the labs informed the consultants that they didn't see anything. That's a good question, Mary Lou. You can see where they saw it just barely above the detection limits. And I asked that same question about the after treatment for Well Four and they said that that non-detect means zero, nothing. They didn't have anything in it at all. It's not that it's just below the method detection limit, it just didn't exist.
And then the other question was, this is the first round of sampling, of how many rounds of sampling and does anything in here make you feel like our investigation needs to expand?
The consultant's still evaluating the data, so expanding it at this time, I don't have an answer for you on that one. And I'm sorry, I don't recall the first question you asked.
How many rounds?
How many rounds of sampling?
Oh, they're going to be sampling probably two or three more times. They're actually doing some sampling now as Well Four has been pumping and so they want to get an idea of what the potential changes in concentrations may be as a result of Well Four pumping.
This was pre-turning on?
This was pre-turning on Well Four.
Thanks.
Is it the first time we've had a hit in Well Five?
This is the first time we had it detected that we know of, yep. The labs previously had just reported it as non-detect because the detection reporting PQL for EPA was .04. We ran it at a different way this time to get, to see if we had anything at all.
So then the monitoring wells that had detections, do you know what depths they are at?
The depths of these wells are between 80 and 100 feet.
Okay, so they're relatively shallow compared to...
They closely matched the Gilman Four well screening depth.
Could you put the map back up, please?
Deep is 5, sorry, deep is 5? Oh, 5?
100 feet.
500?
I can't see that very well. You said 5, monitoring well 5 is at Juniper and?
5th and Juniper.
5th and Juniper. So that's also on the west side?
That's on the west side of the creek. The wells that had the higher concentrations were on the west side of the creek in the sampling wells that we did, the monitoring wells.
Okay, and I think Mary Lou asked this question. So the number of wells and the frequency of sampling at this point, you're not even making a preliminary ask to increase anything?
No, because we had scoped out more than one round of tests in the consultant's work. So they're doing their work and taking more samples.
In terms of sampling from those five wells, but additional wells, monitoring wells?
So I would say that if we could hold your question until we have a more full-blown presentation, I think we had an initial meeting with consultants and there may be some additional testing in wells that we may want to look at. It depends on how definitively we want to identify the, you know, the plume, right.
I think also you're saying at this time, for everything that's going into service and being delivered to the tap.
It's clean.
You got all four wells in operation, all contributing to the circulation?
They're not all contributing right now because the demands aren't high enough. Right now, I believe, 1, 2, and 4 are on and usually it's not until mid to late summer that Well Five demand, the demand gets high enough to turn on Well Five.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So again, this will be a topic at the July 11 work session, a more in-depth presentation and opportunity for discussion and to remind people who are here and watching that that work session is televised, so you may watch it. Thank you, Sheldon.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda is a park impact fee presentation.
Hi there, I'm Jennifer Fink, Park Planner for the city, and I'm here tonight to introduce Randy Young of Henderson and Young &amp; Company. He is here today to provide a presentation on park impact fees and the role they play in park planning as well as park capital improvements throughout the city. And with that, Randy, here you go.
Yeah, Bob, can you give us a little bit of context here?
So, this is the last, Randy has retired. He recently came back to share his vacation with us. You may recall, we looked at park impact fees as part of the whole package with all the traffic, the traffic impact fees he did at this time.
Mike's not on.
Thank you. And so what we wanted to do as part of the post-conversation, the Parks Rec Open Space Plan and how that gets financed, there was an opportunity to talk to Randy about, okay, how does park impact fees kind of roll into that plan and the capital improvements necessary to do that and the impact of where those fees can be paid for as it relates to growth. And so this, the intent of this presentation today was just as a kind of a review of what the law is and how the park impact fee works as we then go forward because I don't know that we're going to get Randy back out of retirement again. This was maybe the last time. So, thank you, Randy, for being here.
My pleasure, Bob. Thanks for the background reminder on this. And there are going to be a few slides that I'm adding to the presentation tonight because staff's indicated that probably would be helpful to spend time not only talking about impact fees literally and legally, but maybe a little compare and contrast to SEPA and other forms of mitigation. I've also been asked to touch on a couple of implementation-related topics that have come up and been brought to my attention, things like schools, should they be, should school sites be included or not and how can they be treated in the whole universe of impact fees? What about credits that are given to developers? There's been some questions about those. And as always, I'm happy to take questions on pretty much anything that occurs to you and I'll do my best to answer them. I also want to encourage that we have the same kind of relationships we've had in the past and that is to, if you're interested in handling it this way, and that's to take questions as we go rather than sit through 30 or 40 minutes of presentation and, because I know by then I would have forgotten all three of my three questions. So just raise a hand or speak up and I'll try and pay attention and answer your questions. So here's our little table of contents. We're going to start off with some definitions and some background slides, some of which you've seen before, and some new ones about impact fees and SEPA. And just for the record and anybody who's not heard that phrase, SEPA, it stands for the State Environmental Policy Act. And it's another way that cities have been allowed even before the Growth Management Act to try and reach out to the development community and have the impacts of development mitigated. And we're going to talk about that strategy and how it's different from impact fees. Then we're going to talk briefly about growth in Issaquah because you don't have impact fees unless you have growth. We've got a single slide to just remind you the data that we looked at back when we did the impact fees. Then we're going to talk about levels of service because this is sort of the vocabulary that we use when we talk about what do we need and what do we need for growth. And there's more than one way to do it and staff indicated that you were curious about how this is looked at in other cities and so we'll talk a little bit about some strategies that are employed there. Then topic number four is going to be very familiar. I'm going to take you back through at a very high level, the math that we went to to get to the numbers that you have so that you understand in the context of all this background how your number came to be. Then we're going to touch briefly on how else you are currently or have recently been funding parks. That was part of the impact fee calculation. It's still relevant to your desire to fund a park system. And then we'll talk about some of those implementation issues like the schools and credits and things like that. So that's where we're headed. And let me begin with defining impact fees. If you're going to pay an impact fee, you're only going to pay it once. A whole bunch of people won't pay it, we'll talk about that in a minute, but if you are asked to pay it, you pay it once and you're done. It's not an annual or ongoing or recurring payment. It's paid only by one part of the economy. It's paid by the part of the economy that is developing or redeveloping. That is, they're building new buildings of some type or another. For park impact fees, that always was building new residential structures and of late, we've added in Issaquah and a few other communities, the ability to charge businesses a modest fee for their impact. But only new development pays this one-time payment and they pay it for capital costs. So we're not going to hire people to go out and take care of the landscaping and maintenance at the parks, but we're going to use this money to buy more land and to make improvements on that land to make for a good park and recreational system. And this is a legal requirement. We cannot use impact fees for operating expenses. And it has to be capital costs that are needed by new development, which means if the city has capital needs for the existing population, we can't make the new folks pay for that. They can only pay for what we need for them. So with that as an overall definition, why do we do this? Well, first, we're always in need when we're facing growth with a way to pay for the new things that will serve growth. So we need money and it's a way to get some of the costs of parks that will serve new development. In addition, many cities, including I think Issaquah, has had a long history of saying as a matter of policy, not only do we need the money, we think that if you weren't building here, you wouldn't be impacting our park system, so we wouldn't need your money, but if you are building here and you're impacting our parks, we think you should share in that cost. Maybe it isn't the whole cost and we're going to get into that a little bit later, but you ought to contribute to some of those costs. Otherwise, you're asking the taxpayers of the existing population to pay for all of new development. And that really hasn't been how Issaquah and a lot of other cities have thought about things. We've really needed growth to share. A third reason has to do with providing the kind of quality community that you want people to live in and that people want to come here for. And those public facilities in the broadest sense, in this case, parks in particular, are very attractive and make this a good place to live, a healthy place to live. And so impact fees help provide that. Now, there are alternatives. You don't have to use impact fees to pay these bills. You could raise taxes. That would mean existing taxpayers would pay for it and growth would pay less or not anything at all. So there's always that alternative. There's another alternative. Don't raise taxes and don't charge impact fees. Don't charge anybody. The free lunch comes in the form of a reduction in the level of service. It means that what you own now will be used by the current population and all newcomers so the parks will be more crowded. We won't grow the system in order to accommodate new development. As a former soccer coach, you've heard this from me before, soccer practice fields are at a premium. And so the idea of having more growth with even more soccer teams is really appealing to me. The idea of having to compete for the same number of soccer fields with lots more teams, that's not very appealing. And that's a good way to understand how the level of service is reduced when we don't grow the system to accommodate growth. Now, there are some rules out of the state law, RCW 8202, 050 through 090. I've mentioned this before and I've also mentioned before, this is an old joke, that if you have insomnia, the sure cure for that is to read this section of the law, it's real boring. What I've done is to put it in plain English. Rule number one is, I nicknamed the fair share rule. What it says in the statute is, growth can be charged for growth. Growth cannot be charged for a problem that the city already owns. We'll come back to whether or not we already have such a problem and whether or not, and how the city would pay for that. But we know going in, the impact fee is limited to growth's impact. Rule number two comes to us from the statute, it's called the nexus of benefit. It means that the amount of the fee, big dollars, goes with the amount of the impacts, big impacts. If you have small development and small impacts, then your impact fee is going to be small. It's proportional. So if you build an apartment building with five units, you're going to pay five times our number. If you build an apartment with 20 units, you're going to pay 20 times the flat rate. So that it may be the same amount per apartment, which is how we've calculated this, but the bigger building with the bigger impacts is going to pay the bigger total cost. Rule number three is called the credits rule. It means that we can't double charge. If the city of Issaquah has other money, and you do have a little bit, that can be used to pay for your park system from real estate excise taxes or an old bond issue or grants, and if any of that money gets used to pay for part of the parks that new development needs, then we have to, and we did, and we'll look at that slide in a few minutes, we reduced what the impact fee would have been to account for that other source of money so we're not making the new person pay twice. We're not making them pay a real estate excise tax on the sale of the new house and then also pay a full impact fee. There's an offset that we took into our calculations. And our fourth and final rule, unique only to the state of Washington, is you get to do all of this stuff and we can have the slogan, "Growth will pay for growth." Yeah, growth can pay 99% of growth, but we cannot charge it 100%. The legislature didn't bother to tell us what they mean by not rely solely, so presumably it could be 99.9%. It could also be .001% or something in between. We know that we're safe because we're well under that 100% threshold because of the existence of some of the other revenues, but it's still substantial. It's still more than 2/3 that we're charging. Now, what can we use the money for? In broad terms, we're allowed to use this money on what the law calls system improvements. And those are defined as the big things that are in your CIP, Capital Improvement Program. That's that document you adopt every year and update that lists all the things you're going to do, not just for parks, but also for transportation and utilities, police and fire. If you're going to make a capital investment, you have a plan. And this has been a well-managed city, you've got a good readable document, you update it regularly. But what the law is telling us is if you have a project in there, we can spend the money from impact fees on that project if it meets the other rules, if it's not for an existing deficiency. But if you were hoping to get a bunch of new urban parks out of the Central Issaquah Plan and those park projects haven't been adopted in the CIP, you cannot spend the money on those parks until you amend your CIP and put the projects in there, okay? What we cannot pay for, again, this is a term from the law, are called project improvements. This doesn't mean a capital project, it means a development project. And by that we mean, imagine somebody comes in with a subdivision plan and they want to build a 30 lot new subdivision with 30 single-family houses. And those 30 houses are going to need parks. And you're allowed to have a park in the CIP that will serve them and other people and that's open to everybody and you can use impact fees to pay for that. But if the developer says, "Oh, I'm going to build a little tot lot, it's going to be an amenity that will help me sell my houses and it's going to stay in private ownership, we're going to have a homeowners association and they're going to charge dues and they're going to maintain it." And, you know, they probably won't put up a gate to restrict access, although they could, but they certainly intend its use to be for the residents there. That would be a project improvement and would not be allowable for you to be funded as an impact fee funding mechanism. Last but not least, the impact fees have to be for growing the system. We can't fix something, it may be a capital cost, but we can't fix something that's wearing out. So if I've got a ball field and it's got some bleachers and they're made out of wood and they're 30 years old and they're getting old and they're falling apart and no amount of paint is going to save them and we sit down on them, we get splinters and we really need to replace those, so that's a capital cost, that's probably in your CIP. But if those bleachers used to seat 100 people and we're going to buy another set of bleachers, even if they're nice shiny aluminum bleachers, but they still only seat 100 people, that's a replacement and so we cannot spend impact fees. Let me take a little side journey here. It's okay to take a project that is partly replacement and partly growth and fund the growth portion from the impact fee. So back to my bleachers. Old bleachers seat 100 people. New aluminum bleachers are going to seat 150? Well, that's a 1/3 increase in the capacity. So if I take 1/3, it's actually, it's a 50% increase, but out of the total 150 capacity, if I take those 50 seats as 1/3 of the total, I can fund 1/3 of the cost out of the impact Now let's turn our attention, this is something we haven't gone through together in previous presentations that I've given to you, but I promised to give you a little refresher on SEPA, the State Environmental Policy Act. It was in existence before impact fees and it was primarily about the natural environment, water quality, air quality, and so forth. But early on, local governments came to realize that there's something else out there called the built environment. That's our parks, street system, water and sewer systems and so forth. And early case law allowed local governments to require mitigation by development of its impacts on the built environment, but it wasn't usually done by money, which is what impact fees are about. So let's look at what a SEPA mitigation is. It's a case-by-case review. Each application is taken in by the city and put under its own SEPA microscope. Often, the applicant has to produce a study and turn it over to the city for review. Occasionally, the city will conduct the study. Sometimes the applicant will conduct a study and the city will hire an independent consultant to judge it. The key here is every application that comes in above short plat levels of threshold are subject to a SEPA review for the natural environment and, in the good old days, for the built environment. We want to know what is your effect on our park system. And what we were looking for under state statute is, this is a phrase out of that law, is the specific adverse impact. Not a general kind of, "Welcome to our town and you might use our park system." We need to know which park you're affecting. It's a highly localized study. And we want that adverse effect on the built environment, our parks, and it has to be the adverse impact caused by your development, not by some other development. So it's a very targeted way of looking at things. Now, understanding that that's how we define it, let's compare the two, SEPA to impact fees. And we'll use the color codes here. If it's red, it's what happens in SEPA and if it's green, it's how you do it in impact fees. And there's four or five differences to take into account. A SEPA analysis is looking onsite at the development and very near to the development site. It's the park across the street or the intersection right out in front of that house. A system improvement by definition under impact fees can be the entire city or whatever service area that we define because we don't have to prove that you can see the property that you impact. We can assert that the soccer coach is running practice on a park across town from where your house is, but your kid is going there or your adults are going there. And so the benefit is the ability to use it rather than measured actual use and we can look at the whole system. Another important difference between SEPA and impact fees. In SEPA, if you broke it, you get to fix it. So if your impact on the nearest park is that that park's not big enough for you, you need to make it bigger or buy us a new park, okay? On the other hand, if that park has just enough space for your additional 10-house subdivision, you don't have to mitigate anything because we've already got the park. And so you're liable potentially for paying for the whole new park or paying nothing at all or something in between. Maybe we need a little bit, but not a lot. In green, we see what an impact fee is about. An impact fee never penalizes one developer and gives another one a free trip. Everybody is charged, it's proportionate share. It's the same amount as everybody else. It's that equitable fair share that we talked about earlier in the definitions. Here's another difference. The SEPA process requires the study to be done by the applicant and to be reviewed by the city and perhaps a competing analysis or study done by the city. Whereas under impact fees, you adopted a schedule, you look it up, the developer can look it up in advance. It's particularly helpful for large-scale developers who have big spreadsheets and this is just another cost they plug in. You know, what's the impact fee? $1,000 a unit, $10,000 a unit, they plug it in, they know what it is, they may not like it, they may have to increase the price of their product to the buyer, but they can tell in advance. They're not playing mitigation roulette of, "Do I win? Do I lose? Do I pay for it all? Do I pay for none of it? Do I not know how long it's going to take me?" And last but not least, there's a difference in the time limit for you to spend the money. You're allowed to keep impact fees up to 10 years. If you don't spend it 10 years after you collect it, you have to give it back to the person who paid you or the current owner of that property. If you charge a mitigation in the form of a fee in lieu of the donation, so, hey, under SEPA, you owe me this parcel, but I'll let you give me money instead, we then as a city have to spend that money not in 10 years but in five. So the clock is a little more aggressive, we have to find a parcel sooner. So with this background about SEPA and impact fees, let's wrap up this background stuff with a reminder as we get ready to move on about the three principal factors that define impact fees and other forms of mitigation. We need to learn about growth and we're going to talk about whether that's population or employment or both. Turns out now for park impact fees, it is both. The second factor we're going to look at is the level of service. This is the vocabulary we're going to use about how good is it, is it good enough, do we need more? And specifically, I want to talk tonight about something we haven't visited in quite a while. Are we going to continue to use the existing level of service, which is how we built your impact fee? Or are we going to be more aspirational? Would we like to be better than we are now? And if so, wouldn't we like to charge the new folks that higher amount? And the answer is, if you want to, fine, but you also have to reach down and grab your own bootstraps and lift up the existing population to that level before you can charge the new folks. And the third thing we're going to talk about is other money. Is there any other grants, other bonds? You know, what does it look like in your most recent CIP? So that wraps up... So that wraps up our first topic of defining things. Now we're going to look in one slide at growth. And I don't propose to revisit all of this. It's just a reminder for the record that, of course, this is a growing city. At the time we did this research over a year ago, we were drawing the numbers out of the Central Issaquah Plan, and we saw an additional ten thousand six hundred dwelling units coming between two thousand thirteen and two thousand thirty and an additional seven million square feet of business space. At an annual growth rate of three percent, two point nine percent for housing and three point six percent for business. If you're growing faster than that or slower than that, it doesn't undermine what we did in developing the impact fee, because we calculated the impact fee on the assumption that each new unit pays its proportionate share. So if you get half the population, you'll only need half the parks, but you'll only collect half the money. It's self-balancing. Conversely, if you get double the population that we've expected, you'll have to build double the parks, but we'll have double the money to help you pay for it. So we're okay if growth is actually slower or faster. That decision is not about what impact fees are about. That's a decision that you made in the regional context with the Regional Planning Council and then through your own comp plan. So we're back to our next topic. Let's talk about levels of service. And here, we're going to, again, go a little bit beyond conversations we've had before and kind of expand our understanding of the vocabulary of how do we know we need things? There are choices we get to make about levels of service. The first choice is, what is it that we should measure? Because a level of service is essentially a number. It's measuring something. Is it ten gallons or six inches or, you know, thirty-seven degrees? What is it that we're measuring? And in parks, we usually measure either the dirt, measured in acres, or the investment, the value of what we have, which is what Issaquah's been doing since the late nineties. And a growing number of cities are migrating to the investment side from the acreage side. But we're going to review this a little bit in order to understand the pros and cons.
Randy, a question on that. Why only acres or investment? And in terms of a park system, why not capacity in terms of users? We have a pool. We know what we can schedule. It can take ten thousand students in class a year. So why not a capacity versus a infrastructure capital cost?
In fact, my slide is too brief. It should say acres and other capacity measures. So we could measure in attendance or swimming capacity or gallons of the pool or if it's an Olympic size in length. We can measure trails in miles, yeah. But good catch, because I make it sound like it's literally just the dirt and it's any measurable quantitative measure.
And the reason I ask is because in our first version of PROST, which was submitted to the state this year, we talked about a deficit in parkland, just in terms of acres.
Yes.
And I wondered if it could go beyond that, and your answer is yes, it could.
Yeah, it can, okay? The other choice you get to make, once you've decided what you're going to measure, is you need to decide what is the benchmark? How much is good enough? And here, the usual two ways of thinking about it are either what we have is good enough. We may have highly locational deficiencies, but then we have locational surpluses in other parts of the city. You know, we just finished a park in an area that's underutilizing. So on balance, we're saying, our park system is about okay. Or we're saying, our park system isn't about okay for the existing population. It needs this and that and the other thing, meaning you would switch to an aspirational level of service. We would like it to be better. If we had no new growth, we would like it to be more. And if you do that, that more has to come out of the city's coffers, not out of growth's coffers. If we have a way to pay for the city to improve its park system level of service, we're allowed to charge the newcomers that higher level. But what you've done, what we've done with you, what we've been doing since the late nineties and what we've done in most other communities, is we've dodged this expensive bullet called deficiencies by saying that, taken as a whole, the system is approximately okay. That doesn't mean you don't have individual neighborhoods coming in from time to time going, you know, my park really is terrible and needs a new swing set or needs something at all, or it's just a bare piece of dirt. Locationally, you can have deficiencies and not violate this law. But if the system as a whole is deficient, then we either can't charge impact fees or we have to find a way to pay for the difference. So let's do an example. Let's look at the way Kirkland did things up until two thousand fifteen. They had the classic acres per thousand approach, and this is what it looked like. These were aspirational goals of theirs, that they wanted to have two point one acres per thousand population for neighborhood parks, an additional two point one acres per thousand for community parks, five point seven acres for nature parks, and some square-footage numbers for athletic space and indoor space. That's what they wanted to have, okay? Here's what happens when reality meets the dream, the aspirational standard. The two point one acres per thousand for neighborhood parks and for community parks would say that Kirkland, back when we did this analysis years and years ago, would have needed about a hundred and two acres. It's the brown bar on the left side. If you could equal the height of that brown bar, you had met the standard of two point one acres per thousand. In the middle bar, we said, okay, what have we really got for neighborhood parks? We actually have more like ninety acres, eighty-eight acres. That's the yellow portion. And the remaining acres we don't have, the red, is an existing deficiency. So either we have a plan to eliminate that out of Kirkland's taxpayer budget, not out of impact fees. And if we do that, then we can charge impact fees at two point one acres per thousand. Or we don't have the money to do that, and we can't charge the impact fee. I'll save that little surprise for another slide. The community parks, on the other hand, Kirkland had been successful in doing some land banking. They got ahead of the curve, as often happens with parcels that become available either by donation or you get a major grant. Sometimes you're ahead of your curve, sometimes you're behind. At the time we did this work, they not only had the hundred and two acres, they had a hundred and forty acres. So the yellow met the full standard and the green was in advance. It was in reserve, where we have that available for newcomers. We already bought for newcomers for way out there, okay? So does that mean we can't charge them an impact fee, or does it mean we can? Again, hold that thought. Share that answer in a minute. Just wanted to lay this groundwork, that when you use specific targets that are aspirational and what you're doing today isn't at the aspirational level, there are consequences, okay? So the limitations of using the quantitative approach, particularly if it's land-oriented, is that it counts land but not the improvements. So we don't have the bleachers and the swing set and the ball fields and all the rest. We just have the dirt. And if we don't have enough land, we have a problem. What if we need X number of acres and that kind of acreage just isn't available? So now we're going to call a timeout here and tell you the story of Portland, Oregon. Because when we did their impact fee over a two-year period ending in two thousand fifteen, we used their then-existing level of service standard of nineteen acres per thousand population and decided that by the year two thousand thirty-five, they would need another two thousand three hundred and twenty acres. That's more acres for park than they have now, okay? They already have about ten thousand acres. It's Portland, it's a big city, okay? So here's where the kind of oops came into play. There's only six thousand six hundred and eighty-six vacant acres of anything and everything in the entire city of Portland, okay? For businesses, for housing, for schools, for, you know, parks, whatever you want. So do the math. Twenty-three hundred acres out of six hundred acres, not a problem. It's not all of the acres. There's still some left for development. It's only thirty-five percent of the total. So the private sector is going to compete for the remaining sixty-five percent. Private sector was not amused. They said, do you currently have thirty-five percent of all the land in the city that's in usable fashion as parks? And we went, uh, well, no, actually, the parks, we've got lots of parks. We've got ten thousand acres. It's about eleven percent, not quite twelve percent. So then the development community said, well, why don't you stay with that? Why don't you get twelve percent of the new acres, the sixty-six hundred and eighty-six vacant acres? Tell you what, you can have seven hundred and eighty-nine acres. Well, that meant the goal of twenty-three hundred and twenty had to go under the bus. I mean, there was no way to accomplish that with this aspirational level of service based on acres. So we realized that we had a problem with them, number two. And we have another problem, which is if you have certain types of parks and your inventory is different than the standard, this is back to the Kirkland chart, you have another problem. So let's look what happened in Kirkland. This is the same chart we looked at before. The red are the two categories where they didn't meet the standard. That was the middle bar on the chart. And their choice was not to raise the taxpayers' bill to pay to come up to the aspirational standard. Instead, they went with no impact fees for neighborhood parks and no impact fees for indoor non-athletic space for fifteen years, because they couldn't pay for the difference out of their own pocket. So they got nothing. So Kirkland also said, as Portland did in the last two years, Mr. Young, can we talk? Isn't there this other way of doing this? Isn't there something about investment that helps us?
Excuse me, Randy?
To take care of the problem? Yes.
You said because they couldn't pay for the gap or whatever out of their own pocket. So they, the actual amount was less than their aspiration, and they didn't have the capacity to live up to their aspiration. And that's what you meant.
Correct.
So therefore, they could not collect any impact fees for that because they were not living up to their aspiration.
Right. They would have been making the newcomer pay for a higher standard than what they actually achieved. They could have, in theory, dumped the aspirational standard and backed down to the existing level of service and charged at that level, but they thought that sent a bad signal. Also, this was in the old grant days when, what was the grant program before its current acronym? Before RCO, it was, yeah, there was an old grant program in which cities were rewarded with state grants if your goal was higher than where you were. Good. We want to dream the dream, but it was killing our impact fee programs. And so it led us to the following thinking about what can you do that's an alternative to acres per thousand or swimming pool users per thousand quantitative basis? You can always buy more land, yes, but you could make improvements. Where did the improvements go, okay? You can make improvements at an undeveloped park. You already own the land. You can now put impact fees in there and make it usable, and that's a legitimate use of impact fees. You can also make improvements at a park that's partially developed but not completely developed. In fact, back to our swing set, or I'm sorry, our bleachers, we can go to a fully-developed park that's got bleachers that seat a hundred and replace them with bleachers that seat a hundred and fifty, and we can spend impact fees for the one-third of that cost, okay? We can make improvements at a supposedly fully-developed park as long as it grows its capacity. And the way we do this is with a level of service alternative called investment per person, which is not new to you. It's what we've been doing, okay? But I promised I would get into the what are other people doing and what are you doing? And so the reason, here's the how we did it and how other cities do it. We make a list of everything you own, and we did that. It's in the study. And then we went out and found out, how much would it cost to replace that? We did not ask, how much did it cost us in the good old days? Because the impact fee is going to come in tomorrow, and we're going to have to buy the next park in day-after-tomorrow prices. Try doing that based on dollars that were earned from nineteen fifty-five dollars, okay? So we have to have not what we did pay for it, but what it would cost us to buy the new system tomorrow morning. That's the replacement cost. We would do that for each and every component, the land, the swing sets, the picnic tables. And we would then add all of those pieces together, and there's a long chart in your report that does this, that comes up with the total value of everything that you own if you had to buy it tomorrow, and divide that by the population, and that's the investment per person. This is not aspirational because it is what you own. We are asserting that we're neither ahead nor behind, taken as a whole. We can still have individual neighborhoods getting grumpy, yeah, I'm way behind in my neighborhood, and another neighborhood going, wow, there's nobody on the tennis courts at this neat new park we just opened, okay? There's going to be a mix of that. But taken as a whole, you have since the late nineties said, we're going to build our impact fees on the assumption that the park system is about right. It's still okay to have a separate visioning effort going on. It's still a good idea to be dreaming the dream and thinking harder about ways to get ahead. But when you're in the impact fee business, state law really limits how aspirational we can get. And so we've got this investment per person, and what it gives us for advantages, back to the Portland episode, is it acknowledges the improvements. It puts a value on them, not just measuring the dirt, but also the things on top of the dirt. It doesn't mean we cannot buy land. This was a big controversy in Portland. Oh, no, you've backed away from our twenty acres per thousand. We'll never buy another acre. No, we just don't have to buy six thousand acres. We need to buy eight hundred. And we're allowed to, we're just not required to. It gives us flexibility on the other expenditures. So as you think about where you want to make your next investment, as long as that next investment is on a project that's in your CIP, or as long as you amend your CIP to put that project in there, you can then spend that money on a new park in the Green Necklace in Central Issaquah. That's one of your priorities. But if it's not in there now, you can't spend the money on it until you put that park project in that plan, okay? And of course, this whole business of the investment per capita is very helpful for cities like Portland that were literally running out of land. There wasn't enough land to buy. So we're done with level of service vocabulary, kind of the basics. Let's do the math again. These are slides you've seen before. We're just going to refresh your memory on what did we do to get to the numbers you've got, okay? So we started with a long, long list. This looks real short to you. It has the first item on the list, artificial turf fields. There were two of them. It cost a million two fifty to replace them. Total value, two and a half million. This went on for a page of fine print in the rate study, and it listed everything else that you own and its cost per unit is its replacement cost. What we got, cutting to the chase, is that total of a hundred and eighty-seven million dollars. At the time we did this over a year ago, you could buy a whole new system of parks for Issaquah identical to the current system if you had a checkbook with a hundred and eighty-seven million dollars in the bank. That's what that means. We then divided it by the forty-eight thousand people who are here. Wait, forty-eight thousand? Remember, we added employees and visitors so that we could impact fees to charge to businesses because they don't have residents, they have employees and visitors. We had a long technical appendix in the report that got to how you count the few hours a day that the employee is there, and that's a fraction of a resident, and we went through all of that. We divide the hundred and eighty-seven million by forty-eight thousand people, and each new person, or equivalent of a person if it's in the business, needs to pay you three thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars in order to keep even with the investment you've previously made.
Randy, I have a question for you.
Yep.
Suppose the new development isn't residential and doesn't have jobs associated with it, such as a parking structure? How do you collect a park impact fee on a parking structure?
A commercial development that doesn't have employees?
Right.
Got an example for me?
The addition to the development requires permits, but it actually doesn't add jobs and it doesn't add residents.
If it's a business, it's got to be earning money. So it's charging somebody something. Who are those somebodies? If they don't have employees serving those somebodies, who are their customers?
So in the new square footage that they're adding, they have no employees?
And no customers?
Anyway.
What business has no employees and no customers?
At the new structure that they're building, they have no employees and no residents. So it's a, it's...
Hypothetical?
No, it's real, but it doesn't matter.
So kind of building a parking garage.
Parking garage, expansion.
It's a mystery.
Is that?
If the structure is an enclosed structure that's going to house employees and customers or visitors at some point in time, it would fall under this section of your current code.
Enclosed structure.
Right. But if we're talking about a structure, but you can't live or work in it, you can just park cars in it, as a, for instance.
Yes.
Then you wouldn't charge them an impact fee in the first place.
Okay.
It doesn't meet the definition of commercial space that's habitable for the conduct of the business. It's simply a support structure in order for the employees and visitors to park, okay?
Okay. So just a little sidestep here. This is parks, and then what about other impact fees associated with that structure? And if it's not an enclosed structure?
Yeah, I can't speak to whether your transportation fee does or doesn't exempt or charge, right? So now let's take this thirty-eight hundred dollars per person and put it through the rest of the steps, because this turns out not to be the number you're charging because of some of the other rules we went through. So let's look at applying those rules as follows. follows. We begin with the $3,800 per person, and we say, "That's for the people who are here." How many new folks do we estimate are coming? Because we have the growth forecast. Back to that earlier slide. We're expecting another 12,191 residents and employees and visitors and whatever, by our definition. So do the math. At $3,800 a person, we ought to be spending $47 million to cover that growth. Okay?
In today's dollars.
In today's dollars. So what if we don't need to? What if we do a Kirkland with the right-hand bar that had the green at the top? We're ahead of the game. We already own some of the parks. We need to put that $47 million through an official step in the legal calculation. Do we or do we not have reserve capacity? I've said a couple times this evening, this will be the third or fourth time, we have assumed that we are neither ahead nor behind. We've said that what we have today is about good enough for the population we have today. Accepting that there are locational deficiencies and locational surpluses, we're on a citywide system here. And so, taken as a whole, it's, you know, it's the Goldilocks and the Three Bears. You know, it's not too hot. It's not too cold. It's just about right. And so it's not too big and it's not too small. Therefore, in the middle of this chart is a zero. We are saying that there is no reserve capacity. Unlike the Kirkland, the green part of the bar where they were acres and acres ahead, we're not ahead. Okay? Taken as a whole. So because we're not ahead and we're not behind, we need $47 million. But we do have a bit of other money. We looked at your capital improvement program, and I'm going to have a slide a little later that'll refresh your memory on exact amounts of unused bond proceeds and real estate excise tax and some other grants. But it totaled about $17 million worth. What we need growth to pay is $30 million. And remember that rule that we cannot rely solely on impact fees. We can't charge 100%. This is the proof that we're not. We've got almost a third of the cost. That's why I said earlier, it's about two-thirds that growth is paying. We have money from other sources that are paying about two-thirds of the bills. If someone came in here as an anti-growth advocate and wanted the highest possible impact fees in the world on the theory that it would shut down development, by the way, it never does. It just raises the price, and they said, "Get rid of the 17 million." As long as there's $1 in that column, I can say that you're meeting the law to not rely solely on the impact fees. And we could raise the pot to 47 million, and that would raise the impact fees. But your own adopted plan says you've got that other money there. I can't pretend it's not there and raise the fees. We acknowledged it and plugged it in and said, "Okay, gross share is 30 million, and we're going to divide that by the 12 million people who are coming." And instead of the $3,800 in the upper-left corner, we're now down to $2,400 in the lower-right corner. And that became the basis for the impact fees that we recommended to you and that you adopted back in 2015. There's the $2,464 per person in the column heading, and then multiplying it by however many average number of people per house, per apartment, for retail, and so forth, you get the $5,600 for a single-family house, and you get $4.94 a square foot for retail. That's what you adopted. And since the time we did that, you've had one indexing step recently. So this is what you're charging today for somebody who walks in the door. So that's the reminder of how we got through all of this to come out with these numbers. We're now ready...
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Prior to you redoing the study, what was our number?
Parks?
Parks.
I don't have that. We did raise it significantly, but we weren't the lowest at the time.
Okay.
And in fact, we were already well up there. We were above the mid-range.
And then, we never used to do it on the business community?
Correct. We now have a small but growing, out of about 80 cities in Washington that charge park impact fees, we're now at about a dozen that are charging businesses. And they're relatively more recent, as different cities have discovered different defensible ways to do this. We've done this with the equivalent population method. Redmond had a different technique and adopted a different strategy. We use this equivalent population method in Edmonds about the same time we were doing yours. Portland's been charging their business community for actually about 10 or 12 years for the park impact fee. So it's not universal, but you're not the only one doing this. Okay. Getting near to the next subject. This is a single slide. I promised I would refresh your memory on where that $17 million came from. So the 47 million is what we need. We're estimating the 30 million that growth would pay out of the impact fees. The other 17 million didn't show up to make up the difference. It was there in the first place. It left us with the $30 million unfunded. You had at that time, a 2013 bond issue with about $5 million left unexpended at that time that was dedicated to projects that could serve new growth. You had ongoing sources totaling about $10 million, and the details over at the left. The REIT, real estate excise tax, you buy or sell a property, you pay a two-and-a-half percent, or a half a percent tax. That was going to generate $5 million. You were anticipating about $2 million in grants, $2 million in inter-local, that's money from one government to another, and about $1 million from some miscellaneous sources, some interest earnings, a small amount from the King County levy, and some sale of land. And there was a small cash balance from your previous impact fees, about $2 million. So that was the funding strategy you have been using, and it is still the funding strategy behind your current impact fee. Now, I leave town, and every year you change your CIP, and so some of those numbers go up and some go down, and the projects go up or down. You're not required to redo the impact fee every time you make a $10 change in your plan. The plan can survive for several years. What you've adopted in your ordinance is a recommendation, a self-imposed goal of updating this every three years or so. We told you, "Don't update it every year, every two. It will, staff won't do anything but updates. You'll make consultants happy, but then we'll be around bugging you all the time." Don't let it go 10 or 20 years. I'm updating a park impact fee for Bothell. In fact, I was supposed to be with them last Monday night, and they had to postpone to tonight, and I said, "I have a commitment to Issaquah." So they're meeting right now to update an impact fee that was done most recently in 1997. It's almost 20 years old. Don't let that happen. That gets really indefensible. Okay, end of the funding discussion. Let's now move on to some of these implementation topics that I said we'd talk about. What are credits for impact fees? Somebody walks in the door, and we tell them, based on those rates, "Oh, you've got 10 apartments, 10 apartments at $4,000. You owe me $40,000." Okay. What if the developer says, "Can I give you something besides money? Can I get something that's kind of offsetting that? What if I give you some of the land that I own, and we can agree on the value of that, and I'll give you the land instead of the money? Can we do that?" And the law allows you to give credits. There are two rules about these credits. And they come from the little reference up there of RCW 8202060-sub4. This is right out of that section of the statute. You can give a credit, but you can only give a credit that is for something that they are contributing, the land for or the improvement for, for a facility that's in your adopted capital facilities plan or capital improvement plan. So if you've got a green necklace park and it's not in your CIP, it's in that beautiful document that laid out what it could look like, but you didn't put it in the CFP. Until you get it in the CFP and then put it into public ownership, you can't give a credit for that. Okay? In addition to that requirement, you have to require the city to make that donation as a condition of development or pay cash. You can't just say, "Well, we want cash only, and you can come around and just give us a gratuitous offer." It has to be a requirement in the development code. Now, your staff is working on some tweaking. I talked with Trish and Dave recently, today, about some changes that you're going to see later this year for the design standards for Central Issaquah Plan. So I'm only vaguely familiar and probably can't answer any good questions that you might have about what that's going to look like. But those are the examples of the kinds of things that are requirements that you can impose if they're properly done and would meet this test. Let's talk about the relationship between impact fees and SEPA and other mitigations because it's important to understand that it's really hard to do very much else besides impact fees when you have impact fees like yours that cover everything. Your impact fee covers everything that your park system owns. That page-long list that added up to $187 million, we didn't leave anything out. We didn't say everything except basketball courts, you know, everything except picnic benches. It's all there. So if you want development to mitigate their impact on your park system, we've already anticipated everything that could possibly be out there, except the things that we haven't invented yet for recreation. So if we'd done this list 20 years ago, and somebody said, "Skateboard park," I'd go, "What?" And we didn't know what that was then. But we keep this by updating it fairly current with all the things that are possible. Because the impact fee contemplates everything that's out there, what else could you be asking people to mitigate? The credits that you can give, as we discussed a minute ago, can only be given for something that's in the CFP and therefore is public property. So if you get taken, if you take into public ownership through donation or purchase a parcel that, particularly if it's by donation, you can give a credit for it if it was in your CFP list. But you can't be giving a credit for something that stays in private ownership. "I'm a business. I've opened this gorgeous plaza that is welcoming to my visitors and employees, and it looks gorgeous, but we're keeping the title to it." And we're going, "Wow, that's really cool. Are we allowed to walk across it?" "Yeah, when I feel like you can." Okay? Because I own it and you don't. And the law is absolutely clear. It has to be publicly owned. That phrase is in 8202050. So what's left? We can use our imaginations, but any other mitigation requirement would have to be done pursuant to SEPA, case by case, expensive review, unpredictable, all-or-nothing outcomes. And it would have to be for something that we didn't cover with the impact fees, and we think we've covered everything. So I'm not sure that there's another thing that we can mitigate. We can certainly lay out a green necklace plan and say, "We want businesses who are developing in Central Issaquah to be thinking about donating that land to us and know in advance that those are sites that we would like to have, and you can donate that to us and get a direct cash offset against the impact fee." You might owe us hundreds of thousands of dollars in impact fee for this large apartment building, but pursuant to Issaquah's own currently adopted code, we're allowed to jointly arrive at what the fair market value is of the land that's donated at the time of the donation. So they're entitled to, you know, market prices. And they can use that as an offset against the hundreds of thousands of dollars they owe you for the park impact fee. But it has to be mutually agreeable. The value, the size of the site, it has to transfer into public ownership so that you operate it. Okay? Now, that doesn't prohibit you from having a little side conversation that says, "Could you take care of it for us for a few years?" Because what happens in terms of ongoing maintenance doesn't defeat the impact fee requirement of ownership. So you can have those conversations with a willing owner who's willing to do some of the maintenance. But you have to take title, or we can't do impact fees and impact fee credits. And I think my last slide is going to be about schools. I said I would talk a little bit about schools. And I really have more questions for you than I have answers, but they're questions to help you think about what the answers look like. The first question is, "Do you want to include, or are you happy excluding school sites from that inventory?" The page in our impact fee list excludes them. Okay? They're public, meets that test, but they're not city-of-Issaquah public. So we took them off the list.
Randy, I asked you just a quick question about that. So this is really just all around the conversation of what your impact fees look like. It really doesn't have anything to do with how a city might decide to partner with a school district and jointly develop facilities together and run them and manage them and operate them. It's just that you have, this is solely to do, this question only has to do with how you calculate your impact fee.
Correct.
Okay.
So I'm going to, I'm going to comment about two more things on this, but I'm going to confirm and affirm that I'm only speaking to the question of whether or not you can spend impact fee dollars at a school site.
On the schools.
Okay? Let me come back to that. The other questions are, "Are the school sites accessible on the same basis as city parks?" Because I think it's touchy to say, "Well, it's publicly owned, and we're going to include it in the inventory, so it boosts the value of what we're charging. And now we're going to take the dollars and we're going to spend it on improving a school athletic field as though it was our own park." This is the point where I step aside gracefully and say, "Talk to your attorneys," because it does meet the test of public, but it isn't accessible on the same number of hours of the day. I don't know if that defeats it or not. It certainly is a policy question for council members to think about. Do you get enough access? If it isn't 24/7, clearly the school district has a lot of reasons, both for the use and enjoyment for their own students, and in this day and age, for the safety and security of those students to just not have a lot of strangers walking around. Is there enough access to make it worth you're putting park impact fees to work on that site? And then, if you are entering into a joint venture and for impact fee purposes, if we have found a way to put some impact fee dollars to work at some school district-owned property, make sure that, another good question for the attorneys, who's responsible for the liability? You know, if I'm out there as a soccer coach on behalf of a league that's unrelated to the school districts, but I get to use that property, and you made it possible for me to use it as the city government, and one of my teammates, team members, you know, breaks their leg, obviously, we hope that I've got insurance and that they've got insurance. But if we get into a liability, they broke their leg because they stepped in a hole that was in that field, is that the school district's fault, your fault, liability? How do you work that out? I don't have an answer to that one either. But back really to your point about impact fees, my only concern for the purpose of tonight's presentation is to recognize that working with the schools does pass the public ownership test. That's good. Okay? But a project would need to be in your CIP. So if you enter into negotiations and you're happy and they're happy, and we all agree, we're going to, we're going to take this bare piece of dirt that they own, and you're going to use impact fee dollars to put in a year-round usable turf field that they can enjoy for sports during the school day and that the soccer coach can use in the evening, okay, but it needs to be in your CIP before you can actually start writing the checks. Now, you could enter into the negotiations. Yes, we will do that. And when we get the money, yes, we will then pay it. But don't be writing them checks before you've got that in the CIP. That is what I was asked to talk about. I hope it's been helpful. I'd be happy to take other questions and do my best with them. I hope I covered some of the things that were on your mind.
Four or five slides back where you had the full accounting, keep going, I'll stop you. It's the 17, the 30, and then the 10, and the 5, and the 2. There you go.
Got it.
5, and the 10, and the 2. So that's as of when we did the study, the 5, the 10, and the 2.
Yes.
You know, we actually have to do a complete reassessment of our impact fees to account for any changes of that. So the 2013 bond, that's going to go to zero. And so, how do we account for using those, and do we have to do some type of reconciliation for the use of those funds and how they apply to capacity or growth-related or potentially deficiency improvements? This seems like, so this is a snapshot in time, but things are going to change.
Yes.
And I could see a developer saying, "Well, it's changed, and your calculation for my impact should change." But no, that's not happening. So I'm just, it just, is that why you're saying do it every three to five years, or three years, not 20?
Correct.
Because you could be too low, you could be too high.
Exactly. What we're assuming until the update three years from now, or in Bothell, 19 years from now, is that the specific grants and the specific dollar amounts will change year to year, but the proportion will be approximately the same. The bond will get used up, but you'll get a big grant. Okay? The real estate excise tax...
We will acquire into our pool of assets something that's contributing to the needs of the growth. We'll exchange that bond, those bonds, for actual park assets, capacity.
Yeah. So your inventory will grow from $187 million to $210 million.
Right, right, right.
The idea is that there will be reasonably small changes on both sides of the ledger as time goes by, as long as time is not 19 years, as long as it's only three to five. And therefore, we don't have to rush back and change this every time we get a small change in this, but we should keep it current.
Okay. And my other question is, you said a couple times, like, and I forget how you said it, "We listed everything. We envisioned everything." You used the example of maybe 20 years ago, if someone had said skate park, you would have said, "Wow." So do we, you have to help me here. Do we have an actual list of potential? When you, an actual list? I think you actually showed that in earlier, a couple slides before this, too. You had the, you had one where you had just one, yeah, artificial turf fields.
Right.
And okay, that's your calculation of the value per person. That's a little bit different. But I think you talked a couple times about, you know, you envisioned everything. Am I saying that correctly? Is that something we can look at, or is it just the way, is there a list, or it's just the way it's worded? It's just all incomprehensible?
So the way we get to the 3,800, which later became 2,600, okay? The way we got to that is we listed everything that you have. We didn't envision anything. We just said, "You own it. Somebody's already invented it." We just said, you own it, somebody's already invented it, we know what it is. That's the 187 million.
Yeah, I think I'm talking about a different list, so I may have confused you, I'm sorry.
So in the CIP list, okay, you can only spend the 3,800 or the 2,600 that we're gonna earn on something that's not on the list of what you own, it's on the list of what you want to own. That's the CIP. That list can have new things as they're invented. At the time we did this, we didn't, we didn't, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick what I hope is both understandable and stupid at the same time. We didn't have drone parks, okay? Personal opinion, I hope we don't, but that's another question. Let's say we get into the business of operating city-operated drone parks, okay? But nobody thought of that, it isn't in your list of the 187 million, but two years from now you become persuaded you're a lot safer doing them in a park than having them flying over people's houses. So you create the park and you put in the CIP $800,000 for a drone park. We didn't know when we did it, but you could add it in the future.
So then it becomes eligible-
Then it becomes eligible.
Impact fees.
It's a CIP project that adds the capacity to the system.
Okay, and my last question is simply is, you've said a couple times tonight, and you're calling it the CIP, we've been training ourselves to call it the CFP, the Capital's Facilities Projects. And, and is there any requirement in how fresh that is? Does it have to be updated at any particular interval or is that just, does the statute or anything require us to update that yearly?
Yes. So the statute has a couple of different paragraphs that speak to this issue. The first is that you have to spend the money on stuff that's in the CFP or CIP. The terms are not identical, but for the purpose of tonight's briefing, let's keep them roughly interchangeable. In fact, let's do a little timeout and talk about the difference. The CFP in legal language is the capital facilities plan element of the city's comprehensive plan. And people who wrote the Growth Management Act in 1990 thought that that would only live there. These were smart people who understood that well-managed cities already were in the business of doing multi-year capital planning, typically called a CIP, a capital improvement program, often for the same time horizon, five, six years, and in many cases, meeting some of the same requirements. The CFP has a bunch of very specific statutory requirements and the statute says, the money that you're gonna spend the impact fees on has to be linked to the CFP. What pretty much every city, including Issaquah, has done, has said, yeah, we got that CFP, but we don't update that every year. Our CIP, we update every year because things change. We finish a project, we get a new project, we got grants coming along. We treat them as members of the same family, okay? But they're not the same document. But we think that spending the money on the CIP when we make an updated version is good enough to constitute what the law has said is the required CFP. Even to the point that a few cities have said, we consider our CIP to be our CFP annually amended. You know, if the attorney's happy with that, that's fine. I'm getting too deep into the details between the two documents. Back to the, to the, the main point, I think, of your question is, as long as whatever it is you want to spend the money on, as long as that increases the capacity of the park system, it isn't fixing something broken or taking care of a deficiency, as long as that thing that grows the park system is in one of them their capital documents, CIP, CFP, tweetaldee, tweetalum, okay? As long as it's there, at the time that you amend your CIP, CFP to include that drone park or whatever new invention there is, or something that isn't new at all, it's just a new urban park in the central core and we finally, you know, we've got the design for it, we got our eyes on a parcel, we're gonna do it, as long as you put it in that document, money we're earning out of this pot that we didn't even know you were, we're gonna put it in that plan, we can spend it on that.
Thank you, you answered my question. We had a basis for this calculation, but the CFP allows us to evolve and adjust and create new wants or desires and we can still apply this basis to it.
Yep. We're, this is another advantage to getting out of the measuring the dirt and the swimming capacity of the pool and measuring it in dollars, because what we're saying is, we own $187 million asset, which is equal to $3,800 a person, we need to keep that investment level, even if the future investment is in a different part of town or for a different thing. Gives you the flexibility.
To just frame this for where we're going, we are at some point going to work on a PROS 2 document. I don't think we're completely aware of what that looks like or how that's going to be structured, but the piece that you gave us tonight really is just a small piece that says, here's how you collect this park fee, the dollar amount of it, and here's what you can spend it on. And that's just a little piece of our plan of what we want to build and how we'll fund it and also how we'll manage ongoing maintenance costs. So you gave us the, just the new capacity piece. So we have other funding strategies we need to talk about if we're gonna talk about it-
You're describing the whole pizza, I brought you one slice.
Okay, thanks. Anything else?
So enjoy your retirement, I understand you're retiring.
There was a theory that I was going to be retired by then.
Sounds like you're gonna at least work another day at Bothell.
It raises your demand when you say you're retiring.
Yeah, and Bothell just persuaded us that they would like to have a fire impact fee like you guys have, so we're gonna do that next. That'll take me through the end of the year. Clackamas County, Oregon, is going exceedingly slow on their transportation impact fee update. They've now announced that it's gonna go into next year. I've announced that I may not be at those meetings, we're in negotiations.
So I appreciate, I think it's a complex topic that you explained very well. I like the way you break it down and the way you step through it for us. And I have many times looked at materials you gave us when we were doing all our other calculations, our impact fees, and, and I'm hoping I can add this presentation to my library of Randy Young materials, it'll be, it'll be used. Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Thanks for having me back.
Well, Paul stole just about everything I was going to say. Thank you for, I mean, in a positive way. Thank you for coming, we always appreciate having you here. And like Paul said, your presentations are always very clear and worthy of presentation. We have our own little park impact fee, sort of Wikipedia video for the city website, and we appreciate you coming. Thanks.
My pleasure. Thank you.
So next on our agenda, Central Issaquah implementation, mixed-use development briefing. We have Jen Davis Hayes, Economic Development Manager.
Yes, and I'm-
Who will be joined by Morgan Shook, consultant?
Okay, where did that go now? See if everybody can see my personal stuff. Okay, I just, oh, there it is. So thank you for having us here today. Oh, look, it's coming. So we are here today to talk about a piece of the Central Issaquah Plan Implementation. The piece is the mixed-use development, and as you know, that was a council goal to explore how the city can explore that, to look at ensuring that mixed use in future development occurs in the Central Issaquah area. We did an RFQ, we had nine respondents, we interviewed three, and we selected Econ Northwest, and Morgan will introduce himself in a moment, because their experience and their ability to provide a financial model for redevelopment where we can make different tweaks on things of the redevelopment picture in order to then decide what tools we want to implement or change in the Central Issaquah standards. So it's a complex topic and we wanted, we have a very limited budget and so we wanted to focus this conversation and with the very beginning of our conversation, I know that on July 11th, you'll have a work session, discuss a larger, broader Central Issaquah Plan discussion. But our approach for this is to look at data and so not just going and talking to developers or talking to urban planners, but also gathering data about market. So tonight's purpose is, in our short time we have in front of you, is to ensure that we have the right questions moving forward. And so we look forward to that discussion. And I will now allow Morgan to introduce himself and his firm.
Thank you, Jen. Actually, I'm probably not too much of a stranger to some of you. I was involved when, a few years ago, when, during the whole Central Issaquah planning process and on a couple issues related to infrastructure, funding and finance. But I want to talk about the other part of my work that we do is mostly on the land use and development side of things. So Eco Northwest is a 40-year-old economics finance firm. We work with a range of governments, private industries and non-governmental organizations on a range of issues, but the things that are probably most concerning and pressing here are related to real estate and development. And so for that perspective, we both work on the public policy side as it relates to land use planning, code development, incentives, affordable housing. And we also work on the private investment side for a range of development interests that span the Pacific Northwest and larger region. So that's just a little bit about us and I wanted then to kind of just talk a little bit about sort of our perspective, you know, just to give you a little sense of sort of how we kind of think about this. Because, and I think we'll get to it, but the central question, as I understand it here, is questions around, we've done some planning, what can we do to make sure that vision becomes reality? And so for us and for the plan, right, we're really focused in on that sort of central piece, you know, how does the availability and condition of the land, the availability and access of capital, the feasibility in terms of market rents and what the city can do on the public policy front in terms and sort of partnership front, make these things more or less likely to happen. So that's just a short sort of overview of how we kind of look at these things, but as sort of Jen said, what we really want to do here is not talk a whole lot and listen to you just to make sure we understand the issues, because as, as we kind of know, this is a complicated issue. There aren't a whole lot of silver bullets or easy levers to pull. And so being very targeted and making sure we understand the key issues will allow us to really sort of direct our work and answer the most pressing questions that you guys have at this point.
And so just, again, you guys are very aware of the project motivations, but for the broader audience, that, you know, we acknowledge the amount of time and energy that the community and the city has invested in creating the Central Issaquah Plan. We really appreciate the support of the vision and continued support of the vision for a mixed-use pedestrian-friendly, more dense area. And, but we've seen that the development that's come to the area to date has been the standard single-story surface parking or single-use redevelopment. And we know that once something's built, it's there for a good, potentially 50 years. So we're three years into this process and we want to reevaluate to just make sure we have the right tools. The new development in the community that has been happening so far has been met with mixed emotions about growth, traffic displacement of favorite businesses. We understand the communities and transition and we want to make sure that instead of just sitting back and saying, well, it's part of our vision, we want to make sure that the current and future Issaquah residents are able to enjoy the benefits of the redevelopment to create new businesses, to create new parks and new places to spend their time. Any comments on our motivations or moving forward?
One.
Sure.
Very well stated. I just wanted to say that I have actually been participating in a few discussions with the staff about this and I think Jen did a really good job summing up what they're trying to ask us if they've got the right question. Yeah, well done.
Okay, well, it's always good to understand kind of what's motivating a set of feelings or issues, but for us, it's really, let's focus in on some very specific questions. And so, so with conversations with staff, we sit down and kind of say, okay, you know, based on the conversations that you've been having, the things that have been swirling around this, what really are kind of the key questions that you feel like, okay, I want this engagement to inform me, I want to understand what's happening here with these issues, I want to have a better understand, understanding of the types of actions that may, I may be, we may be able to take as a community and the trade-offs that might be associated with those things. So, so this is a very short list of kind of three questions, you know, three primary questions. And I'll just kind of read them off because they're words and they're up there and you can read them, but what we'd like to do is just get some conversation, discussion around that, you know, are these articulated correctly? Are these the right questions? And your mind, as you kind of say, and don't worry about filtering yourself too much, I guess, I know it's council and we always like to filter ourselves a little bit, but, but you know, when you think about this issue, like, I want, I was thinking we could do this, so what's the question we need to answer in a priori of that? So for the first one, I think, here is, what are the sort of general market conditions supporting mixed-use development? Like what's happening on both the rent side, what's happening on the cost side, what's happening on the land availability side that is making mixed use a more or less attractive sort of proposition in downtown as it's currently codified in the, in the plan? And then asking a question, okay, well, what's, what's the trajectory of those conditions? You know, are those conditions likely to be here sooner, you know, later? You know, what's, what, if we're gonna try to understand sort of some temporal sort of time nature of this, what's, what direction are these things headed for, for the city? And if there's, I'll, go ahead. Yeah.
So I saw one of your, you had a couple jurisdictions, cities, you had City of Portland, you had Mercer Island, you also had PSRC as clients. And so I think we're talking about the Central Issaquah subarea primarily, only, yeah, but, but not, and not within that, limited to our, the regional growth center footprint within that. I imagine with those clients, well, especially with PSRC there, you probably, you have experience looking at the growth centers that they have defined and are managing? And are you gonna be able to, and in answering these questions, are you gonna be able to pull in kind of actuals and measures and other information gathered from these other growth centers?
We're just finishing the regional market studies for the four county area for PSRC. So we've actually already done a lot of the foundational sort of market analysis of all the regional growth, not just the regional growth centers, but every urban center, urban place in the four county area.
Right, right, okay, whether it's a regional growth center or not, there are other center, other type of center designations. And so are these questions, I mean, is the, so are these, some of these questions in, did you come, I mean, is that breadth of work contributing to these or, or do you know of other, others that are coming out of that analysis that you think that, that we should consider?
There are a lot of different questions. So these are the questions, I understand, are most pressing for, for you guys to answer. And I would say, right, you've gone through a planning, just go back to project motivations, you've gone through a planning process, you put forward a sort of bold, great vision for, for downtown Central Issaquah, and stuff is happening, but it's not really kind of like that. So help, so there's a need to sort of inform and educate, sort of, let's understand where you guys are on the growth trajectory, right? In terms of just thinking about development value, right? Are we kind of at the low end for mixed use and we're, and we're likely to get to the economics pretty quickly, you know, are we gonna, you know, are we gonna be able to look like some other place and we can characterize it that way? So, so, so I hear, I hear the first motivation is this, help us sort of understand kind of where we are. You know, we've gone through this big grand visioning process, where are we on this, on the sort of valuation side in terms of the type of growth? And then I hear, I hear questions about, the second question is, what can we do on the policy front, right? The market's gonna do what the market's gonna do, but what can we do at the margins that is, might be particularly helpful? You know, the changing sort of development policy, zoning, offering of incentives, seeking new sort of partnerships on the development front. Those are the questions we've been, this is kind of why we want to talk about this stuff, because we want to make sure we're thinking about the same things, thinking about things in the same manner that you guys are.
Could you go back another slide still?
Sure.
The Venn diagram one more? Yeah, so that suggests that all factors are proportionally the same size, but they're really not, are they? How would you characterize the leverage we actually have through policy?
I would say through policy, it can be pretty profound. I mean, I think, you know, just off the cuff, you guys have done a lot of the right things in going through the planning process and the upzoning. What you're really trying to talk about is what can you do at the margins, right? That can churn a project that might be feasible three years from now or if rents were to continue, but make it more feasible today. Are you willing to make those kind of trade-offs in terms of sort of, is it still within the vision of the plan and is it worth you to kind of, if you feel like there's an opportunity cost of losing that project or moving that project forward in the development cycle? Those are the questions, I think. But ultimately, the big ones are really about, on the two sides. It's really about land availability assemblage and really about rents and costs to build things. So to, you know, capital is really a private sector sort of perspective around having the right developers who understand, who can bring the right kind of money to do the kind of projects that you want to do. Everybody's got their right, you know, you know, sort of secret sauce on the development side about how they sort of organize and bring that capital together. And sometimes maybe if even if you have these three things, it's really about trying to find that right partner who does the kind of project that you guys are envisioning. So it's really more a question about sort of partnerships and reaching out to the right set of players in your marketplace.
And I think you're telling us too, that we have a, we have a rather large basis already on the policy side. So, you know, this is, this is a fine tuning, it's not an overhaul. So, you know, you know, this is, this is a fine-tuning, it's not an overhaul.
Yeah, I would think so. And that, that's the question we want to test here, is, I think, you know, just from my quick scan, there are probably a few things that I think about, well, there's, there's some, there could be some fruit here if we were to investigate this further and, and you could probably make a few tweaks. But, but that's, but that's all sort of suggesting that you guys want to go down a route that wants to look at those, look at those decisions.
Keith has a comment.
Sure.
So, so let me, let me just add a little bit to both of Paul's questions. So the PSRC information, I think, is germane in that what's happening in the region. So our consultant is versed in kind of understanding regional economics, and they're going to take some of that information that PSRC, that's relevant at the PSRC level, and get down to a finer grain of detail in Issaquah and look at what's happening here. So it's part of, I think, understanding the landscape. But, you know, in, in moving to this piece, I think the question about how big the policy circle is, is really going to come out of what they, I think, analyze in terms of our economics and our propensity for getting mixed-use. If, if they say it's already here and the market supports it, I think that that, that bubble is irrelevant. If, on the other hand, they say that we're right at that fulcrum point and we can either push it one way or the other, then it becomes really important, because you could pass some incentives that could get some of those projects to come through the pipeline, or you could make a decision to say, we're going to now keep it from happening if it's too far, if there's too big of a gap. You could pass some new regulations, some policies and new regulations that could keep some things from coming through the door that we may not want.
Paul's question?
So, so, so all, so I just, to build on what Keith said, I think it's right. I mean, for us, it's really, we want to start with the fundamentals and understand those conditions, which is why that first question is there. Because there are some things that we see, like, oh yeah, I think, I think it's worthwhile to put policy and partnerships on the table, just given what we know about the region and what we know what's happening in the Central Issaquah. So I think it's really those kind of key questions here, you know, we want to build off a solid base of the very specific conditions and the very specific issues within the subarea to sort of then sort of posit what might be possible.
Morgan, I had a follow-up question on that second question. The second bullet there, what can the city do to accelerate mixed-use? Out of your work that you do and the analysis, it sounds, just looking at the two bullets, that it's black or white. Do you get it? Do you get it everywhere? Or do you discourage it if you can't get everywhere? Do you actually, within what you're doing, have the capacity to be able to tell us that we can target it, that we could actually, one solution might be, or one option might be, you're not going to get it on the whole first floor, but you can get it at the corners and major intersections? Like, do you get that far down into the policy suggestions possibly?
We can, we can get into, into that level of detail, I think, if it's.
It's not black or white.
No.
It could be black, white, and gray.
Yeah, I mean, I think for us, it's, you know, if that is a sort of direction where you feel like, you know, what are, what level specificity is going to be helpful for you guys, you know, I mean, so this is always the trade-off. Do you need to be more broad, or do you want us to really zone in on some very specific pieces that?
That was just a question, it'd be interesting to hear what the other.
And I'll, and I'll just mention real quick that the, the Central Issaquah Plan Implementation Subcommittee at the EVC, too many letters, is actually doing some legwork right now, looking at the plan and the neighborhoods that were defined there and the characteristics, and starting to look at the overlay of the streets grids that are not there today, that may be there in the future, and thinking about that a little bit, so it can add into this work. So, so again, we're trying to do what we can to add into the limited budget and amount of time. So that's, I think, I'm not sure if we'll get to the, these are the five streets, but we, we hope to kind of have a little bit more of that certainty, if that's where we go.
Morgan, is it, is one option, or are you seeing out there the possibility just require mixed-use in certain circumstances?
People do, yeah. But you always, always, it's always that the trade-off of it potentially being vacant, so.
Well, and the reason I mention that is because we've talked about what can we do to accelerate, what can we do to deter, and always, you know, how do we sweeten the pot? But it also could be, we might have a market where, like you said, the market, the economics may be there for it, so what do we want to do to tip it? Well, maybe we just require it. I don't know that, I don't, I don't know that.
You don't have to incentivize.
Yeah, we don't necessarily have to incentivize.
So. I want what Redmond and Kirkland have. I feel that they've figured it out, and they have the kind of development, mixed-use that I want to see. So I want to know how they did it, and how do we do it like they did it? And a mix of if it's incentives, it's incentives, if it's regulations, it's regulations. But they've shown it can be done, I want us to do it the same way.
Can you highlight kind of the key pieces, the key developments or key places in Kirkland and Redmond that when you say, like, I mean, just in terms of like, this is, this has always been my vision for the area, I think about downtown or Kirkland, or I'm thinking about, you know, somewhere just off of Overlake or downtown Redmond, I mean, just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, the mix of residential and retail, I mean, they're, they're just, it's all, there's tons of it going in, in both cities, and continues to go in.
Mixed-use is important, but it's not the only important objective that we have, and I think not only for our city, but for the region, and, and something that affects many facets of livability and, I think, who we want to become. And the other thing, and that is, I'm making sure that we get, you know, housing that's affordable and in proximity of the jobs that are here. I know we're doing a housing strategy plan at citywide, and I don't.
And also CIP.
And CIP. And I don't know the kind of the timing of that, but I, you know, I kind of the same mind, I think we can, we look at mixed-use and I think how another, you know, it's, it's really not mixed-use, right? There's certain outcomes that we're going to get from that in livability and, and, and again, people able to reside within, you know, proximity of the career that sustains them. That, and, you know, in my mind, you know, we're not getting that either, you know, three years into it. And so I guess it's as much as anything, a question for my fellow council members as, as much it is for you, Martin, is, is, and I don't know if, if there's the capacity here, and I don't know if we, you know, how much modeling you can do, so to speak, if we had, you know, a certain amount of, you know, we just got, we just got done, you walked in while Randy Young was talking, he talked about, you know, dwelling units, we're down to units, we're looking at capacity and stuff like that. And, you know, we have capacity and we have plans that we're planning for in terms of dwelling units, but we also have some goals in terms of, of, you know, what type of affordability ranges at least the dwelling units are in. And I don't want to make this, expand the scope too much or make it too complex, but I think one of the principal outcomes that we're seeking does demand that there are a greater proportion of dwelling units affordable to people living in with the proximity of where they work. I'm trying to use code language without saying affordable housing, but that's, but, because that's a, that's not sufficient definition. Workforce housing is, but, and I like that idea of in proximity, you know, it's about people not having, there's transit-oriented development, it's, you know, not being dependent upon, you know, vehicle trips that are originating or ending, you know, inside the city, they begin and end within the city. And so I think about mixed-use, and I know it's a type of use, but I think of that dwelling unit type, you know, you know, we talk about levers and tools, you know, Stacy just mentioned, oh, maybe all we have to do is require it, but, but one of the unintended consequences I don't want is to sacrifice maybe what we also need in, need to have in terms of housing stock in those affordability ranges.
Morgan, before you answer, can I make a comment back to Paul about that? Because mixed-use is not just residential retail, it's also commercial retail, meaning that if we have office buildings, mixed-use might mean that the first floor is reserved for services for workers, not just services for residents, but it'd be interesting to hear.
I, I think I get that, I was, yeah, I understand that difference, not just retail, commercial, commercial and as residential.
Okay.
Thank you, Stacy, you have a question?
No, I was just letting you move, you had a comment.
Oh, no, so it's just a couple of follow-up questions. So, so if I understand sort of the question on housing, and it's related to my second question, it seems like motivation here is to make sure that the housing gets built, because you guys, housing is just good to have more housing, it helps all price points by just delivery market rate. But the city has provisions around its incentive zoning that requires sort of explicit sort of performance of sort of building affordable housing is part of that.
Only in the core.
Income restricted housing.
Only in the core.
Yeah, only in the core, yes, sorry.
Not in the whole central square.
And so, so you, you just want to make sure that we're paying attention to that as an, sort of explicitly as part of this process.
Explicitly, yes.
So I heard sort of a implied question about the scope of your work, and also, I think a part of Paul's questions might be answered in the eventual question that's answered about trade-offs and policy considerations. So can you talk about the scope of?
Yeah, so, 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 so our scope is in flux because we want to, because we haven't started yet, because we want to make sure that we are being very targeted around what is going to be useful for you guys at this present time. And we have a set of questions that you guys want to step through, so we want to make sure we don't give you, give you answers that you didn't ask for. So good consulting 101. And so, but our, our approach generally was to kind of do kind of two things analytically. One, it's just to do sort of the market characteristics for, really specifically looking at mixed-use, right? And this is really a story about fundamentals. One, we understand, we want to understand the broad trends, but we also want to understand kind of what's achievable, right? In terms of sort of new market rents, was it likely costing people these days? Do these things work financially, given what we know about the available land uses and the natural hurdle rate that a lot of this has? Because most of, most of the land here is in good productive use, right? So it's got an additional hurdle to get over. Somebody's got to buy the land that much more productive than simply someone handing it over for them at $0, right? So we need to understand, kind of, you know, take that and understand sort of subarea feasibility. And so the second piece then is, once we kind of have, tell that story, and, and I think what it sounds like is, you would like some sort of explicit comparison to other growth centers, looking at what's happening in sort of new products and Renton, oh, Renton, well, Renton you could say, Redmond and Kirkland, but in seeing, okay, well, how is Issaquah any different than those places in the types of products that are getting built there? So, so I want some characteristics there. Then, the question then is really about the policy side of things. And so we have sort of tools at our disposal to allow us to really quickly and really in-depth understanding, understand sort of your current code and understand where there might be areas for these explicit trade-offs. You know, whether there'd be issues around parking, whether there'd be issues around FAR, building height setbacks, design, you know, other kind of performance things, if it's lead or built green or things of that nature, parking, incentive zoning, affordable housing, transfer development rights, relative to the feasibility. Because on one side, you could say, these are all public benefits that are part of what it means to build stuff here, right? That was how the plan was laid out, but you could also think about them, there are also kind of effective taxes in some sense, right? You're asking somebody maybe to do something different than they would otherwise. And so is there enough value to overcome that hurdle? And would you be willing to reduce those things in, in sort of thoughtful ways that it meant that you could get those projects? So that's explicitly what the last question is. Filtered within that, right, is really a sense of sort of, you know, if, if we can say that, you know, market looks good, the fundamentals look good, sort of your code looks good, what other things could you be doing here? Or what else could be done that other sort of good jurisdictions who are attracting mixed-use, you know, what is Redmond and Kirkland doing, or other places in the Northwest that are much more tactical around sort of, you know, you know, being smart, you know, and the city has a long track record, track record of doing this, but similar sort of types of activities around the economic development front.
Two things. First, I, I want to just clarify, I was perhaps being a little bit flippant earlier when I said I just want Kirkland and Redmond one. I, you know, I want a balance of housing, jobs, services, and amenities, where we have currently, the people who work here can't afford to live here, and the people who live here can't get jobs here. And so if you had, if you had a match between those, you know, you could have, you could have a world where if I-90 was backed up one day, it wouldn't matter, because the folks in Issaquah are all just staying in Issaquah, and they're not going off to Bellevue, and they're not coming in from, from Renton and whatnot. But around this issue about trade-offs and policy considerations, you know, I, I think that sometimes people think there's a binary between being quote-unquote, you know, 100% throw open the doors pro-growth and being 100%, you know, close the barn doors behind you. And I feel like we may be at a point where we can nudge it a little bit more towards the, take some patience. And, you know, if, if we try something that, you know, results in a little, a modest, you know, slowdown in interest in, in throwing up new, that's the wrong way to put it, sorry, building new, you know, rapid development-type projects, if we slow that down just a tad to make sure that we start getting the kind of development that is important to the folks in the city, you did a good job of, of clarifying what you had been hearing from, from the populace, it feels like it's time to nudge things a little bit in that direction.
I just wanted to mention that, Paul, you mentioned about the, we know, you know they're doing, we're going to be doing a housing strategy, and that's going to be in the next two years. And so it is, this is a small piece of the puzzle of the Central Issaquah Plan Implementation, and again, you're going to have a larger conversation on July 11th. And we won't be so far along that we can't stop and move a little bit, but again, our limited scope, our limited budget, we don't want to be too broad and not give you real answers. And I think one of the things I've heard is that we want also to be honest, right? So we've said to our consultant, don't just come in here and tell us we're doing a great job, look at this beautiful plan you created, people love you. People do, I mean, I hear that all the time from developers, oh, people love Issaquah to, you know, because the demographics are great, you know, and it's a beautiful town, and we all know that, why, the reason that Issaquah is great. But we want to know, we want him to tell us, well, this is what, you know, these are the things that I see that are, could be concerns, and this is, these are, again, you're right, not at 100%, flip the switch, you change a little bit this, here's the options. So we're going to come back to you with not just, here's our recommendation, change it, make it all, or let it go, we're going to have choices for you. And then you can decide, again, you'll have this broader conversation around the Central Issaquah Plan and other pieces of it to help you paint the bigger picture. But unfortunately, the housing strategy won't be complete before that.
Can you give us a timeline and touchpoints, you know, when we might, when this surfaces again, and what the timeline looks like?
Yes, I should have that handy, sorry. So I want to say that we're coming back in September, and then we've planned to have this complete by November. So we'll come back and kind of get, and I present some information, make sure, again, we're on the right path, are there things that bring up new questions from what we've heard? And are there things that you may respond, this is no way, we're not even looking at that, so we won't spend any more time on that issue, but.
Just a quick clarification on definitions. When I say mixed-use, and when you guys say mixed-use, you're talking about contained in a single building, right? You're talking like the vertical mixed-use, there's a ground-floor plane, one or two stories, and there's typically housing or some other use on top of that.
There's such a thing as horizontal mixed-use?
Yeah.
Just checking.
Yeah.
Somebody say Atlas.
Bob.
Yeah.
So, well, I'm very, very excited, because as my fellow council members know, I've been chomping at the bit for this conversation. So I'm really excited, really happy that you're on board, Morgan.
Well, I'm glad to be back here.
So are there any additional questions or tweaks to these that, we feel like this is, again, broad, but we're going to get down into some real detail?
No, I think you got it.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks. The last item on our agenda tonight is report, sorry, reports on regional activities. Anybody have anything? Oh.
No, report.
Hold on.
Report.
Yes, very small. Super tiny. Tuesday, July 5th, we'll be having a Land and Shore Committee meeting, it's our, not, not our normal date, but we're moving it to the same night as the council meeting, it will be here in council chambers at 5:30. We have a very brief discussion at the beginning on potential incentives for LID, and then we will have two action items, AB 7191, amendments to the land use code, again, one of those mixed begs, lots of different things. And AB 7197, this will be our first look at a recommendation to amend construction hours and permitting of construction hours. And the other item that I had, Eastside Fire and Rescue, which is Issaquah's fire service, is having, is completing a strategic planning exercise and having an open house in Issaquah on, where am I, July 27th at 6:00 PM here in the Issaquah Council Chambers. There's information on their website that talks about the structure of the open house and expectations for it, and we'd like to get as many people out as we can. and expectations for it, and we'd like to get as many people out as we can. All right, we are adjourned.